With the Lime Kiln Swimming Association kind of located in the middle of it. Long driveway coming down in off of Turkey Plain Road. As you enter really the facility kind of down in the south. Corner of the property, southeast corner of the property, southwest corner, excuse me. We're looking to relocate the existing structure that is located in that area. Up and utilize the existing contours into the embankment here. So that from the top view, you have a one-story structure. And that would house his office. Offices for the property and for his businesses. And down below would be storage similar to what he does now storing wood product. That he creates on site in the building. The other small structure which we call the ticket booth. Would be located more towards the existing gates that are on the property. And what that allows. Mr. Ferris is to kind of control traffic so that people coming in. Landscape companies that come in and purchase the material would stop here. Check in, get their order and then drive down into the work zone. Lower into the property where they would be filled up with the product for. For their use. So that is why we're kind of doing that is really to control the traffic flow. So that people aren't coming all the way down in and making it kind of a hazardous situation. The building like we talked about in their plans, we can go over those would house. Mostly offices for his company. And we have some parking that's going to go in up there. So again, we can control parking, keep people from driving down into the back. It's more of a hazardous condition. You know, the rendering. Of the building here, why it's not showing up. Where are we here, sorry. Alright, there we go. So the rendering is what we're trying to recreate is kind of a barn look. As you saw at some of these existing gates and the entry sign out front is very timber frame. Kind of tying into his business. And so we're kind of trying to achieve that by showing some exterior wood. And try to use some colors and samples that would kind of. Give you that effect of a timber frame structure. We do have layout of the building as well if you need it. Some of the other concerns that were brought up during the site walk. I know one of the board members talked about lighting. We don't anticipate any major streetlights, anything like that. But there will be some lighting on the building, obviously for safety and security. Around the building so that employees can walk to their cars. And that would be about it for any external site lighting. So that being said, we did not. Render this small building, but it's going to be in a similar fashion of making it look like more like a small barn. And that'll just be essentially an office space where people can come up. Basically sign off on what they're purchasing, then get back in their vehicle and drive down into the site. That being said, I'll keep the presentation short. And open it up for any, any questions or concerns that you or the public may have.
Mr. Ferris, do you have anything you'd like to add at this time?
The only thing I was add is I might have spoke to a couple of board members when I seen him on the site walk. That the ticket booth is. Kind of going to conquer two. Situations, one, traffic, the stop traffic because we do get a lot of miscellaneous traffic. That aren't there to purchase. It's they're just either lost, turn around. Or they may be members or guests of the swim club. That do drive down the facility, they're kind of not sure which gate they're supposed to go to. And they do drive down through the facility and keep going. And take a right and go all the way to the bottom of the facility, which is. Under, you know, heavy equipment operation throughout the course of the day. So we'd be able to control that traffic before they enter the facility for number one. And number two is where the ticket houses as well. It's, it's a flatter area on the site, which would prevent. Anybody from stopping any lower, which is a greater topo. Which would be more hazardous for a traffic, traffic control of trucks rolling. Not all, not everybody chalks their wheels and it is a fairly decent sized topo. So we could stop them on a flatter area and they'd, it would control any acts, hopefully control future accidents. Of any vehicles entering and leaving the site.
Yeah, it looks like it, it's well thought out, well designed. It looks very nice, so. Okay, if, if neither one of you have anything else. Let me ask anyone in the public if they have any questions or comments. So with that, I need to get your. Screen, stop sharing your screen for a second if you could. So I can see everyone that's in attendance. If anyone from the public would like to make a comment or ask a question, please raise your hand. Okay, Mr. Steele. You're on mute, go ahead, Mr. Steele.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, great, yeah, I.
Mr. Steele, could you state your address, please?
Oh, my address is four Plantation Court.
Okay.
So where my property lies in that last screenshot, I'm up, I am but the northern or the most north, the upper lot. Of the Ferris mulch product. I did get a chance to review the, the improvements and they look great. And having lived next to the operation for the last several years. My biggest concerns are just from the noise, the traffic and, and people mainly that go up on the upper lot. You know, there's a lot of heavy equipment down below and I think it's a great improvement. The property has been maintained very well. It's Mr. Ferris and Ferris mulch has taken over. I, you know, as a working man, it's a big operation and you, the town is my, my only representation to consider. Having these, you know, non-conforming uses that, but. And, you know, having to live by like today, the, the drone of the heavy equipment. But I will state that I found that the, the operation does operate within the hours that they, they are allowed to. And I've had a couple of, you know, interactions with Mr. Ferris that have been good. We've been able to have it, we have an amicable. Communication. So I'm just more concerned as the enterprise grows, the business grows, you know, we, we may, you know, it makes it more, more people are going to come down. And the business will continue to grow and then they'll grow up to where it's right outside my kitchen window, up on the upper lot. Or more, even more heavy equipment down there that runs and it's very, it is loud. But I, I've taken it with a grain of salt that, you know, if I, I know that these things are going to be loud noisy from eight to five on a weekday. But they're not there on a Sunday and, you know, it's not there late at night and the gates are closed. I had run into of a trespassing situation in the course of time, but we were able to resolve with that between the two of us. So it's noise, the traffic and potential. You know, people coming up to the upper lot that concern me the most.
Okay, Mr. Ferris or Mr. Sherwood, would you like to respond to that and talk about your plans with the upper lot?
Oh yeah, so we have no intentions and we have an agreement with the town to utilize that upper lot. So he doesn't have to have any, you don't have any, have any concern about that. In the future on your end and that's. So with that being said also, the trespassing issue. We'll make that clear that that was just a personal issue. And it wasn't created on our end, it was, and it was a mutual agreement that was worked out on, on something else. So it had nothing to do with us using the facility or the business.
Before I open it up to, is, before I have to up, up to more questions. Is it my understanding that the, when you move your buildings? And build this new building and demolish the old building? That the contents of the upper lot are going to be moved? And that upper lot will basically be empty space?
That's correct.
Yes, it is.
Did you know that, Mr. Steele? I can't hear you.
No, I didn't, I didn't know that. I mean, there's just been, there's been moderate activity up there. But it's always been within the hours and, and no, I didn't know that there was going to be completely cleared.
Yeah, so I was told that's the plan. Any other, any other comments? Or questions from the public before we open it up to commission members? Okay, I don't see any hands, so with that. Jay Streamman, any questions? You're muted. You gotta unmute.
What's the size of the building? The new building?
Mr. Sherwood or Mr. Ferris? The size? How many square feet, how many stories?
Go ahead, Rob, I'll let you answer that. Yeah, sorry about that, it's sixty-five by, excuse me, seventy-five by sixty. And basically one story fronting the upper lot as you come in. And it's a tuck under, there's a storage space underneath it. So from the backside of the structure, it'd be two stories from the front side. Street side we'll call it, it's one story.
Okay, and that's just for storing equipment, office space and that kind of thing?
Upstairs would be offices for the, for his operation. Downstairs is strictly storage space for different lumber materials, et cetera.
Okay. I'm good, thank you.
All right, Stephen, any questions?
Nope, no questions for me.
Okay, Eileen?
No questions and it sounds like they're actually improving the, the safety and everything in the, of the area. So I, I think it's an improvement.
Absolutely, Bobby Joe?
I have a couple of questions, um, so. The square footage of the building that you're planning to put in is about forty-five hundred square feet. Is that just one, is that the first level or is that both levels?
I'm sorry, I'm going to do the math, I don't know it offhand, it's sixty by seventy-five, so.
So it's about forty-five hundred square feet on the office floor. And then underneath it will be a, a storage area. And I believe it has a smaller footprint. Than the office itself, am I correct about that?
It's actually the reverse, the office area is smaller than the storage area.
Okay, so under, and then, so what are you, and the storage area is for wood, equipment? What are, what are they using the storage area for? I saw on the site plan that you already have mulch outside. So, so is the plan to bring all of that inside? So that it's not outside anymore or?
Oh no.
For additional?
Okay, no, no mulch products. Bulk materials we brought inside, it'll all be. Custom cut lumber that will be stored inside the facility. Fencing, mantle beams, custom siding and so forth will be stored inside the building.
Okay, and where, what, so your office space now is two thousand square feet?
The office space upstairs is.
No, you're existing, like, so the existing building that's coming down is how much?
It's forty by, forty by fifty.
Okay, so it's about two thousand square feet and I'm assuming you're going to completely demolish that?
That's correct.
Okay.
That'll be, once the facility is built, that one will be demolished.
Okay, and then the upper lot, you had said no use. My question, like, one of my concerns is obviously for your neighbors, you're, you know, in a non-conforming lot. Your, for, for commercial space and it's being used for, for commercial. So my question, you had stated that the upper lot, what do you currently do in the upper lot?
We don't do anything, alls we have up there now is wood storage and a few machines stored up there. And that's all we do up there.
Okay, so you're not, and, and that's going to be completely gone, there's going to be no more. Storing of any equipment up there, any wood storage, anything like that. So when, in the case of the neighbors that you have abutting that property, that will actually be quieter?
It's, yeah, well, it's, it should be quieter because there's really minimal that's going on there at this point, besides some wood storage. The only thing we do is move a machine in and out of there, maybe once every three months. To remove wood, so it should be very quiet at this point and it will definitely be quieter in the future.
Um, could I, Mr. Chairman, can I just reiterate to help the two parties understand?
Yes, please.
When you go to the resolution regarding intent of planning zoning, which I stated before. It's on November fourteenth, twenty seventeen, this was an agreement that was put in place. And item number three. It says, in the spring of twenty eighteen, the upper area of the property will be processed and cleaned, including twenty-five feet. From the edge of the pond and access to the pond shall be maintained for fire protection. Now, in, in regards to this. Consideration was taken into. Play that, yes, there was a lot of wood there to begin with, there was a lot of cleaning that had to occur up there. But the, I, it's my understanding that part of the reasoning for moving the office from its present location to its new location. Is so that area can have their final cleaning done. Because right now, the resolution that was agreed to with the Planning and Zoning Commission is the most important aspect. For Mr. Ferris to follow and obviously he's two years behind.
So Mr. Ferris, clearing, so having you put that building up will make you be able to. Be in, to be in compliance with the resolution number three from two thousand and eighteen.
That's correct.
That's correct, so there'll be nothing stored up there, there'll be nothing processed up there. That will, that will go clean and remain clean.
That's correct.
And then in terms of expansion, um, future expansion, is that, I mean, do you plan to? Do you plan to grow and, and utilize more of, of the area? Is that why you need more square footage? For the office space?
Well, no, I mean, we're going to demo the bill, we're going to demo it right now, so it, the. If we're going to go through the process, we're going to, I would say, yeah, we, we would say we're going to grow in the. Fact that we're going to mill. Custom lumber. So that would be where we need most of our storage down below. So that would be where, we, that would be another, we do on a small end right now. So we're going to expand that a little bit bigger on as far as the, the mill end. And we would store it inside the building.
Also, Mr. Ferris has another office space where some of his employees work. And having a bigger onsite one facility would just be. Better operation obviously for him, instead of not have two different office spaces.
Okay, and then, and you, but you also mill onsite, correct?
Yes.
On top of the mulching?
Yes, we're, we're in the forest products business, so yes, we do.
And I'm assuming. Doesn't really sit, you know, from the resolution milling is not really part of, but I'm assuming that's. Part of the. Part of the uses that's approved under, quote unquote, approved under this resolution, correct?
Yes. Under the non-conforming, it was, it was originally a fence company.
Okay. Okay, no more questions?
Bobby Joe, just so you're aware, the, Mr. Ferris has done a very good job in cleaning up this piece of.
And I drove by, I know I couldn't, wasn't at the site, but I did, I have driven, have driven by and it's definitely.
From, from what I was told, the previous owner had created quite a mess in there. And Mr. Ferris and his employees. Cleaned it up, it's a very large piece of property, how many acres are there, Mr. Ferris?
Says twenty-two, so I saw that, I read it.
Yeah, so there's a lot of acreage, things are spread out, lots of room, it's clean. And, and I have. No doubt he's going to do a nice job with everything. I do have one question though. Mr. Ferris, the mulch piles on the, on your property, is there any regulatory? Limits on how high those piles are allowed to get, because some of them are pretty tall?
Yeah, anywhere from, well, anywhere from thirty, twenty-five to thirty-five feet. And then we just want to have access to them for fire. Or emergency vehicles, have access to piles for them.
Okay, and are all those, all those different piles you have, are they all within that limit?
No, the dirt pile's higher, but there's no regulation on the dirt piles.
Gotcha. Okay. And were all the cards sent to the neighbors, you have your return cards?
Yes. Yes, we did.
All right, were they turned into the, to the office, Beth?
Nancy?
No, we will be receiving them however.
I know, Mr. Steele, you received your letter in the mail?
Yes, I did, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments, any, any other commission questions? Did we get everybody, we got everybody, no other commission questions? Any other public questions or comments, Mr. Steele, you have another question?
Yes, real quick. I want to agree with that, there's been a definite good improvement down on the property. With, with the future look to expansion with it being milling. Is, are you intending to have the milling work done outside, is that going to push more heavy equipment hours? Is that something that is going to be more constant in addition to the, the mulching equipment?
No, Matt, the, the hours remain the same, that won't change, it'll be just during business hours. And it, basically it's a mill that'll be set up on the southern end of the property. So once the building is removed, it'll be in that location. To the left of the building, actually a little south.
Is it inside or outside, is it like mill, is it like?
It's outside.
I wanted to point out for the record. That we are. Commission members and it's, it's available to the public. There is a resolution regarding this property that's dated November fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen. It was an agreement, I believe that was reached between. The Planning and Zoning Commission and Ferris Properties LLC. When the property was purchased, Mr. Ferris, you purchased the property in about two thousand and seventeen?
Yes.
Okay, so this document. Was, was. Created by, I guess, Cohen and Wolf and, and. And attached to this file, so this is also something that we've had an opportunity to review. Okay, so with all that being said. If there's no other commission questions?
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I do have a question when you're ready.
Okay, go ahead.
Number one, going back to Mr., what Mr. Ferris was speaking about in regards to milling. And things of that nature. That, we're going to have to verify that through the resolution of the Planning and Zoning Commission. To verify that that use is compatible with the. Other uses that exist there, I do believe that this hearing can be closed. I do believe that if you want to take your consensus of the commission as to. A decision, you can certainly do that. But the decision, we will need the aid of our land use council in helping us write this decision.
Okay, I am.
Did he take a consensus, Beth?
I think, so what you're saying, Beth, is you want, you want to review this, this. Resolution and make sure milling is, is an appropriate part of this resolution.
It's, if, if it isn't part of this resolution, then the applicant would have to come back and ask for another variance. To increase the non-conformity of the property, so it's really two separate items. Okay, but as far as the approval for. Or denial, however you want to go with this particular decision, I do want to review it with town, with my land use council. In writing, draft it, have him approve it. Because it's, it's one of those instances like the planning and zoning decision that comes around every thirty years. It's a very, very unusual circumstance. That we have this non-conforming use there and it has gotten better. And, you know, we are making improvements to the property in a positive way. But I still feel the need to have land use council look it over before you guys make your final decision.
Okay. That's probably not a terrible idea, so. I mean, we could read this, I've read this resolution and. I'd have to read it again and again, I'm not an attorney. So, Mr. Ferris, what you're asking is not out of. The realm of reasonable. But I would like somebody, what we're going to do is continue this hearing till next month. I think would be the prudent way to go and.
I have a question, I have a.
Hold on a second. We're going to continue this, if we can get a motion and vote on that, to continue this for a month and then. Have town council review this resolution and. Determine if milling is, is going to be a problem or not, does that sound good, Beth?
No, the request by the applicant is not for the milling. The request by the applicant is to build a structure. I, I don't want you to confuse the two, they're two separate items. And if the, if the answer is that as far as milling, that's not something that you're granting him a variance of, okay? He's not asking you to grant that variance. He's, he is discussing that, he's talking about milling. That is something that me as the zoning official have to have further discussions with him. To decide if it's an allowable use on the property presently. That's not your purview at this point, it could be in the future. But not.
I was under the impression.
Application.
I was under the, I was under the impression we weren't granting a variance on this, we were, we were looking at the entire land use.
You're, you're correct and I'm, I apologize and so used to saying variance with you as being the zoning board of appeals. You're dealing with, at, at, the request is to expand. A non-conforming use. By the structure, you're, you're being asked to move it into a demolish it structure and put it in a different place. That's what the variance is for in the most easiest of terms.
Okay, so. Bobby Joe, what was your question?
So my, like, I don't know if it's more of a question or it's, I mean, if it's more of a concern that I have is regarding the milling. Because nowhere on his application does it state that he's. Wants to use now to do this as milling and that was. Pretty much what I was asking before was based on the resolution. I don't, I'm reading, I have the resolution in front of me and nowhere does it say milling. So I don't want to give an approval for, for, for them to demolish this building. And then that sets the, then that sets it forth where he can then increase. The uses of what he's using the space, of what he's using it for and that was, that's my main concern. I mean, he's on, he's in an R eighty space. I, I do not disagree that they've done a beautiful job cleaning up. I don't disagree with the fact that it's a beautiful rendering of the building that they're putting in. My concern is for neighbors like Matt Steele that if we go ahead and we, you know, we stamp this that he can. Put this building in and then he wants to do milling and then what's next? And now we have this big huge commercial. Operation being operated in what it's, it, that's not in a commercial zone.
Okay, I understand and I want to read this paragraph from this. Resolution, in nineteen sixty-four. the commission approved a special permit for the site authorizing a variety of buildings and uses, including a warehouse for the storage of wood and wood products, a shop building, outdoor storage accessory uses in an office and research development lab with restrictions on the size of the buildings and the location where such buildings and uses could be located on the property. So when I read wood products, a shop building, um, that tells me, as Mr. Ferris says, he's in the wood business. He's in the wood products business. So milling kind of goes hands in hand. And something tells me since nineteen sixty-four, they've been doing some degree of milling there. So I don't see this as a problem or a deal breaker, but I do respect that these things come along so rarely. We just want to make sure the town is legally covered. I I I get that. So I think we'll continue on with our vote for tonight on his uh, request to build his buildings and tear down his other building and continue along. And then Beth and the staff, if you want to reach out to council some some other questions interpreting this this um resolution from two thousand seventeen. But um, you know, I I'm very comfortable with Mr. Ferris's business and and what takes place there. Does that sound good, Beth?
I um. Yes.
Okay, any other questions from the commission?
No, sir.
Any any other questions from the public? Raise your hand, please. Okay, so we're going to close this public hearing. And Mr. Sherwood, Mr. Ferris, you're welcome to stay on. We're going to go into another public hearing. And then we're going to do our work session later on and we'll give you an answer tonight, most likely on your request. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, so. Organized here. Okay, the next public hearing we're going to open is for Mr. Pacific of one twelve Old Hollyville Road, a conversion of a guest cottage to an accessory apartment. We had, we are going to have um, Melanie's going to be back for this. So Stephen, you'll be you'll be um, you can sit there as questions, but you won't have a vote on this unless we seat you at some point in the future. So the seated commissioners are Lawler, Shreeman, Melanie Ryan, Eileen Freyburn, and Bobby Joe Beers. Do we have a staff report?
Yes.
We did not read this staff report, right?
No. Okay, um, memorandum to Rick Lawler, Chairman, zoning board of appeals members from Beth K. Wagner, planning and zoning official, staff report zoning board of board of appeals seating hearing on March sixteenth twenty twenty-one dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, new public hearing. One twelve Old Hollyville Road, conversion of guest house to accessory apartment. In nineteen eighty-four, a permit was granted for a guest cottage under the regulations for guest cottage. At that time, under the regulations for guest cottage, the structure could quote not be occupied for more than a total of one hundred and eighty days in any one year and may be provided in R forty and R eighty zones only, end quote. The regulation was later repealed due to the difficulty in enforcement. Consequently, the guest cottage at one twelve Old Hollyville Road is a preexisting nonconforming use. The variance requested would increase the footprint of the structure to create living space on the first floor where the existing garage is located and add, in addition, consisting of twenty-four feet by thirty-five foot garage with a bonus room to be located on the second floor. That doesn't make sense. The proposed addition would be thirteen point five feet from the rear property line. According to the assessor's records, the existing structure has six hundred, has a six hundred and seventy-six square foot foot footprint. Uh, the carport is proposed to be converted to living space adding two hundred and sixty square feet. With the addition of a two-car garage and living space of eight hundred and forty square feet, the footprint of the structure will almost triple its existing size. It should be noted that the proposed structure will exceed the footprint of the existing principal structure, which is one thousand six hundred and thirty-two square feet, which raises the question of which is the principal structure and which is the accessory unit on the property?
Okay, thank you very much, Nancy. Are there any letters from the public or emails that should be read into the into the record?
I have no letters.
Okay, I'm not aware of anything either. Okay, Mr. Pacific, you ready to go?
Yes, I am ready to go. As Nancy stated, um, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, very good. As Nancy stated, there is um, no living space on the first floor. It's garage and storage. And on the second floor, six hundred and eighty-nine square feet. Um, we are currently looking to upgrade to allow family members to live in the accessory apartment. And um, we are looking to uh, is, as you've stated, increase the size basically to um uh, thirteen seventy-eight. Double, that would be twenty-six hundred square feet or twenty-seven fifty-six square feet. The front house is basically um, three thousand square feet. So I guess you could contest which one is the living uh, the the primary residence. But um, we are looking to um, adjust and I I just did my measurements um, a short time ago with uh, the current map that we had done by Brown Brownham Land Smayers. And I think on the on the south side or the COVID side of the property, the space between the property lines is thirty-two point eight feet. So we are only taking uh, ten feet of that for the garage. So subsequently, I don't think that's in a variance, but the backside is uh, within ten feet of the back property line or the east side of the property. And um, that's what we need a variance for.
Mr. Mr. Pacific, what what's what do you need the variance for?
I think it's the east side of the property that uh, adjoining the Burtay uh, property line. Uh, we are looking to add a a garage that is um, twenty-four feet in width at that in that uh, south side direction. And we currently have thirty-four point nine um, thirty-four point nine feet from the the current existing uh, structure from the property line. So that's what that's within the fifteen fifteen feet requirement.
Okay.
It's outside the fifteen foot requirement.
Okay, and on your on your um I'm reading your hardship that you have in your application. Did you read that into the record? Did you mention your hardship?
Sure. The cottage uh, would be compliant with other homes on adjoining properties. Building garage would allow for more living space within the structure for the family to be uh, able to live there in a a more comfortable um, means. The footprint of the home would only change on the front and back of the home, which is the east and west side. Home has currently has four-foot walls on the east and west side and um, it limits uh, living space dramatically. You can't come within uh, four feet of the the wall on either side without hitting your head.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
No, not at this time.
Okay, anyone from the public that would like to speak, just raise your hand and uh, Mr. Coitz, uh, state your address, please? You got to unmute first? I know this technology is tough.
That's the truth. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, my name's Richard Coitz. I live at one oh eight Old Hollyville Road. I'm um, directly south and adjacent to the proposed structure. My first comment is the garage and bonus room, which I don't I don't quite know what a bonus room is. That's bigger than my house, just the garage and and the bonus room. My house is twenty feet by forty feet or eight hundred square feet, the footprint. So they're bu- building, just the garage alone is going to be bigger than my house. In order to build my house, I was required to have two acre zoning. And I know because that that building to uh, preexisting nonconforming that they're not um, they don't have to abide by the two acre zoning, but they're, you know, the fact that I had to have two acres to build a house where I did and and they're going to be allowed to put in a much bigger house and far less uh, property. I have a there's already an existing apartment in there that people have been living in for the thirty years I've been here. And they're going to be putting in another apartment under that is my understanding. So uh, Gene, does that mean you're going to have two apartments in there now, one downstairs and one upstairs and plus that bonus room, which is big enough to put a third apartment in, I would think?
No, Dicky, um, uh, it's going to be.
Let me preface my remarks, even though I've already started talking. I like the Pacific because they've been wonderful neighbors and I kind of got blindsided by this application. I I wasn't expecting it to be this big at all. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, number one, it's only going to be a one-family home. Um, it's basically um, six hundred and eighty-nine uh, square feet per floor, living space in the original footprint and then another eight hundred and thirty-three uh, square feet um, in the in the bonus room and garage. Uh, we are a little bit smaller. I understand what you're saying about your home when you had to file for, you had to go two acre zoning. Uh, but this one is slightly smaller than your house. It's not, it's not as big as your house, Dicky. It's uh, twenty-four by uh, thirty-four. And um, that's, your house is substantially bigger than that. Um, I don't plan to make multiple apartments there whatsoever. It'd be illegal to do that. Um, that's only for the single family. My daughter and her family are going to continue to live there, or we may reverse how we live. We may move to the back and they may move to the front.
Um, an accessory apartment, if I read the regulation correctly, limits it to two people, correct? Beth, is that correct?
Beth?
Um, it's a, it's usually, it could have one bedroom, usually they're one bedroom. Um, but there is instances where there are two. Uh, sometimes they're put in uh, for aids and things of that nature.
Oh, but the number of people, it says it's limited to two in an accessory apartment.
That's, yes.
Okay.
Can we go back to the footprint, just so I can clarify that a little bit?
What my house.
Mr. Pacific and yourself.
My house.
When I was speaking, when I was speaking before in regards to square footage, I basically was basing it on the footprint of what is proposed, okay? Not that you have a three thousand square foot house in the front. That footprint, meaning just the outline of the building itself, using the assessor's records, is very close to what is being proposed to the rear of the property. Everybody understand that?
Yeah.
I wasn't going by the square footage of the whole house. I was just going by this footprint of what is being proposed. And that includes the garage.
Yeah.
It doesn't include the second floor or anything. It's just exactly the footprint.
Right. Okay, any, Mr. Coitz, anything else?
Not at this point, I'm thinking.
Okay, all right.
Excuse me.
Mr. Pacific, anything else you want to say to counter Mr. Coitz's uh, comments?
Other than um, his his numbers on the the square footage, uh, we're not competing. Uh, it's it would be conforming to the two, the house on either side of it. It would be, it would be the exactly um, when I say conforming, it's it would be built in the same mode as the other two homes, Dicky's home and the Burtay's home are within um, forty yards of uh, forty yards of this accessory uh, apartment. And it's, it would not, I don't think degrade from their property at all.
Okay, anybody else from the public? Uh, Mr. Burtay, is it? You're going to have to unmute.
You have to unmute?
I'm sorry, I was.
Mr. Burtay, can you please just state your address?
Yes, Tom Burtay, one fourteen Old Hollyville Road.
Okay.
Okay. The the size of the house, it's sixty-four feet long by thirty-four feet wide. So that's a good-sized house. Um, as Dicky was saying, uh, I'm a rear lot. I have two acres. Dick needed two acres to put our houses on there. That would, that's the zone. Um, I guess the Pacific's lot is a little bit smaller. I thought it was a little bigger, but it looks like it might be a touch smaller. And now it's going to have two full-size houses on. My concern is that's a three-bedroom house. Um, I don't know where a septic's going to go or a well. My well is right in the front of my in front of my house, which is going to be close to uh, the new structure. Um, so those are my concerns with it. Um, there's plenty of room on the on that lot. There's got to be a variance that it has to be five feet closer to the lot line, which is closer to my property. And it, there may even be on the back side, I don't know. It's thirteen feet from the back line. I don't know if that's supposed to be fifteen feet also. So it's, just in my opinion, it's it's an awfully large structure for that uh, that area. Uh, there's been people living in that cottage since we've lived here. We've never had a problem with any of the tenants or with the Pacifics. It's just that I think it's a an awfully large structure to be squeezed into where it's going.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Coitz?
Uh, I'd like to echo Tom's uh, sentiments as far as the septic goes. There's going to be, if I'm reading the plans right, there's going to be two and a half baths in this house. Um, I know when I put my house in, I had to put a, I had to hire an engineer for an engineered pump-up septic system. And I guess this doesn't come under your purview, but my question is, is there enough room for a septic system to handle two and a half baths in that house? And um, getting back to a, an accessory apartment, if I'm reading it right, it says it can't be more than nine hundred square feet. Now, if they want to put an accessory apartment in there in the in the present footprint, I don't have a problem with that. I just have a problem with the the size and scope of this this project. On an apartment, that's a full-blown three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath house.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? Uh, Mr. Pacific, go ahead.
Yes, um, the plans call for only a two-bedroom home and there's a a septic system that is um, currently meets regulations for a two-bedroom home. And um, uh, it's the bonus room is just that. It's a place to have um, the children have their playroom there and storage. There will be no bedroom on that side over the garage.
Okay. Well, I imagine we'll we'll get into a lot of this when we um, get into our questions. Any other uh, comments from the public? I think um, Mr. Coitz and Mr. Burtay, you're the only two members of the public. Mr. Burtay, go ahead.
Um, I thought it was at least a three-bedroom house. I'm trying to get the plans up now. There's two bedrooms on the second floor and a master on the first floor.
Oh, I got it.
I'm looking at the plans myself right now.
Master on the first.
That is correct. Dennis, the second floor has eleven by eleven-foot, eight-inch uh, bedroom with a walk-in closet. There is no second bedroom.
I'm only seeing two bedrooms.
Okay.
On the plans. And the, and that there's the bonus room.
Correct.
Which isn't going to be, uh, which isn't going to be used as a bedroom. Okay, so, at this point, we're going to go to commission questions, we'll come back to the public, if, so you can think about your questions if you have any, or, uh, any other comments, so. Um, Jay, any questions?
No, but just to, to, I'm just got it straight. They want to build or convert i- into a, uh, two-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath house. Uh, with this, uh, bonus room, about how big is the bonus room? Any idea?
Bonus room is, uh, going to be twenty-four. By, uh, by, uh.
By thirty.
Thirty, yes.
Okay. That's a big room, so I don't know. Uh, that, I don't have any other questions, I just wanted to clarify that.
All right, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the plans, and the bonus room looks to me like twelve feet, six inches by thirty, and then there's some, some closets and like a little entryway to it with some closets. So it's not all room.
That's correct.
Going by the plan that I'm looking at.
How many people would be living there?
What's that?
How many people would occupy that building?
Four people in total, the hus- my daughter and her spouse and the two children.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Melanie?
Okay, I have a question about, what is the exact section of the zoning regulations that he's asking for the variance from?
I, I heard C-one-three, um, Nancy, Beth, perhaps you can clarify that?
Dealing with accessory apartments in a, um, separate unit, accessory apartments have to be attached to a home. This is detached from the home, it also is bring, if you were to grant this application, it's also bringing it more, believe it or not, more into conformance. With the accessory apartment regulations versus the now-defunct cottage regulations. Cottage regulations only allowed you to reside in a guest cottage for one hundred and eighty days a year. And it's my understanding that this guest cottage has been used for three hundred and sixty-five days a year for the last thirty years.
So it's under section three-point-six?
Three-point, I don't have the legal right in front of me, Melanie, I'm sorry, I've been having technical issues with my computer.
Well, three-point-six says special provisions for residential uses, and then section C under that is accessory apartment.
Right, and I just have my Rex out, so give me one second.
I heard, I, I heard C-point-one-point-three.
There is no one-point-three.
Okay, then I misheard.
No, I mean, no, that's what's on, um, the public hearing, you know. I don't know if this would be considered the legal notice or not, but it says section three-point-one. C-point-one-point-three, conversion of existing guest cottage into an accessory apartment. It just didn't have.
C-point-one, number, uh, C-one.
Point-three.
Okay, so, it, the three is where it says such unit should be located within or attached to the principal unit.
Oh, so it's one and three?
C-one and three.
Because that's not a setback section.
There's no mention of the setback in the legal notice?
I don't think there was a mention of setback in the application.
No. It was just, it was in your memorandum, it was mentioned, like, as a side, it just says, the proposed addition would be thirteen-point-five feet from the rear property line, but like, that was sort of like, uh, you know. It wasn't the main.
That wasn't the main, no.
Okay.
I do have listed in the application, the variance application, the garage listed is eleven feet from back property line.
Okay, so my suggestion would be, in order to, um, clean up the technicalities associated with the application is, um, reposting of the legal notice, but we do it on the website, we don't publish in the paper because of COVID. But I think you will have to continue the hearing, just so we do not have a defect in the record. Melanie, would you agree?
Uh-huh, yeah.
Thank you for pointing that out.
All right, before we continue, let's just go through one round of commission questions in case something else comes up. Eileen, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, I'm a little bit confused with, of these two buildings on one property and how it can be considered an apartment when it's a, a large, good-sized house. I, so I'm, I'm a little bit confused.
Okay, Bobby Joe? You got to unmute Bobby Joe.
Okay, so what is the total square footage of the front house? Of the main house, what is the total square footage?
I think it's right around thirty, thirty-one hundred square feet.
Thirty-one hundred square feet?
Plus or minus fifty, fifty square feet, it's in that vicinity.
And then what is the square footage, the total square footage of the, um, quote-unquote accessory apartment slash house that you're, that you want to put up?
Okay, let me do the math for you, it's, um, twenty-two, um, twenty-two eighteen.
Total, both floors, so the total.
On the garage, of course, but above the garage and, uh, the current footprint. Well, I'm sorry, I get to add another two hundred and sixty square feet to that. So I said twenty-two.
I'm not asking for the footprint, I'm asking for the total square footage of the.
Um, when I'm converting the carport, that's two hundred and sixty square feet. That would become living space, the garage over the, the bonus room over the garage is eight hundred and thirty-three. And the original footprint is thirteen-seventy-eight.
So the total living space, the total living space of that back house is two thousand four hundred and seventy-one, is, am I correct?
Uh, yes.
And then the front house is how much?
About the thirty-one hundred.
Okay, so that gives, that gives you a total square footage of the two buildings of five thousand five hundred and seventy-one square feet, correct?
I didn't do the math, but yes.
Okay, and then this is in R-forty zone, am I correct?
That is correct.
And then according to regulations, Beth, correct me if I'm wrong, it's ten percent total usage of the, um, for structures on the, on the property, am I correct, for R-forty?
Hold on. We just had this today, Nan.
Yeah, I was going to say, we just correct, ma- checked on this today.
R-forty.
I believe it's ten.
I believe it's ten, but.
Okay, so, so the number that I just gave, I just want to confirm, so you're proposing.
Percent, that's correct.
Okay, so you're proposing, so, also I want to point out that the square footage of your spate, of your land is fifty-five thousand four hundred and eight. So the proposed, um, two structures that you have on there is already over the ten percent for R-forty, is that correct? Or were you aware about it, and is that correct?
I was not aware of that, no.
Okay.
When you say the current, uh, footprints are over.
No, what you're proposing.
Oh, okay.
So you're, what you're proposing is over the ten percent of the, of the allowable, um, usage of that lot.
Coverage.
To the.
Called coverage, yes.
Coverage. Um, lot coverage, um, I just, because the numbers that are, that are in here just were kind of a little, I just wanted to confirm all of, all of that information. Um, and then you, so it's, it's thirteen and a half feet pri- currently from the back of the property to where the, where your current garage is, correct?
It's, no, from the current garage, it is thirty-nine, thirty-four-point-nine feet, yes.
From the back, from your back lot?
Correct.
So your rear setback is currently thirty-five feet?
No, I think it's fifteen.
Okay, and then Beth, regulation is twenty feet for R-forty for the back lot, am I correct?
Hold on one second, before you go to that route. Yeah. I will have to tell you that, um, the clearance on the building coverage is twelve-point-five percent, because the property does have a special permit on it to have a guest cottage.
Okay.
And that would be considered a use allowed by a special permit, so it increases his percentage of usage.
Okay.
Um, and you're talking about the rear, again, in the R-forty zone, when you're talking about the setbacks to the rear. Um, it's called an accessory structure, and the structure should be twenty feet from the rear line.
Okay, so that was, so I read that right, okay. And right now you have thirteen-point-five, correct?
With the, with the.
Proposal is thirteen-point-five.
Proposal is thirteen, that's correct.
But that's not in the vari- that's not in the application.
Right, that's what we said, the legal notice has to be.
To be, to be noticed with that, anyway.
It's a defect in the record.
Okay, and then also, I mean, is a, does he need a, did, I, and I, this is a general question, I, um, because it's an accessory apartment, technically an accessory apartment is supposed to be connected to the home, so he also needs a variance on that.
And that is in the legal notice.
Okay, I just don't see it in his application, maybe. Right? I don't think he put it in his application.
He can put it in his application.
He only said garage is eleven feet from back property line, under, where it says list the specific sections of the zoning regulations. Okay. It isn't like, he's asking for permission for a variance to have an accessory apartment.
No, but the, but the request by the, but the department feels strongly that we have to, in order for him to ask for, um, improvements to be made to his property, he has to, we have to make that change. Because right now, they're not in conformance with the special permit that was granted by the planning and zoning commission, which was for them to have a guest cottage. Again, it's not just Mr. Pacific, it is the previous owners of the property that have continually had someone living in this structure all year. So we're trying to, to bring them more in conformance with the zoning regulations, um, he's one of three guest cottages that are left here in town. And the other two are nightmares.
But he has to request a variance for both?
For the one, he has to request a variance for the setbacks to the rear.
Okay.
Okay. Steven, or Bobby Joe, are you done?
I, I think so.
Okay, Steven, you have any questions?
Uh, this question, uh, there, is there an existing driveway all the way back to where this would be?
Yes, there is.
Does it need to be widened or restructured in any way, given this?
Not at all.
All right, Henry.
Mr. Pacific, how many acres do you have?
It's one-point-two-seven, um, one-point-two-seven-two.
Okay, very good. Okay, um, with some of the questions, we, we, um, are going to continue this hearing till next month, can someone make a motion so we can, um, we can, uh, Jay's, Jay's coming back in, I just want him to hear this. Jay, are you there? You gotta, Jay's going to have, you're going to have to unmute it, Jay.
There you go, okay, we're back, sorry about that.
No problem.
That's from there for you.
So we just, we just went through our commission questions, and you didn't miss much. We're going to need a motion, we're going to continue this to next month, we have to fix some language, and the staff is going to take a look at the application and, and fine-tune all the details, we're going to have to revisit this next month, unfortunately.
Okay.
Who would like to make?
I'll make a motion, um, to continue the hearing to next month so that we can renotice it properly. Redo the legal notice.
Would someone make a second?
A second.
Who's that, Bobby Joe?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to, all those in favor, by a show of hands, to continue this to next month, it's, uh, unanimous. Mr. Pacific, I'm sorry, but we got to clear this up, we'll have to talk to you next month.
Not a problem.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I make a suggestion in regards to this.
Sure.
Possibly of scheduling a site walk, um, you may want to go out and take a look at the property in relation to the other properties.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a great idea, should we, should we, um, do we publicize that and open it to the public?
Usually, um, we do a special meeting, it depend, like, like with, to be playing, it's, depends on the weather, um, what I would do is suggest to have, I don't care, I don't want Mr. Pacific to go through the expense of having a surveyor, surveyor go out and stake the property at this point. I think he can pace off and give, and I'm looking for him to give you an idea of where the structure will be located in relation to the property lines and the size of the structure, because I think that seems to be, um, of interest to you as a board, um. And I, I would give it like two weeks or so, let's see how the weather, if we get a little bit warmer and get rid of some of this March wind and cold.
I, I love the idea of a site visit, they're always helpful, um, I also like the idea of Mr. Pacific, obviously you could give us the grand tour, um, Mr. Kowits and Mr. Bertay, I like the idea of them being able to attend this, maybe to, clear up some of their apprehensions or questions as well, so, um, we'll, we'll do that, we'll, let's take a, let's take a motion to s- to have some type of site visit, a motion, a second, and a vote for sometime in the next couple of weeks.
I'll make a motion, schedule a site walk.
All right, so Jay. Jay has made the motion, Eileen has seconded the motion for a site visit, all those in favor, by a show of hands, please raise your hand, and it looks like it is, uh, unanimous. So we will do that. Okay, Mr. Pacific, so we'll, we'll talk to you and come see you in a couple, a week or two.
That'd be great.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Sorry, sorry for the inconvenience.
Not a problem, thank you.
Okay. All right, so let's move on to the next order of business. Let's go into our work session. For Ferris Properties LLC. We heard from Mr. Ferris and from his representative, we asked questions. Again, the public hearing is closed, so it's just us talking amongst ourselves. What are you guys thinking on Ferris? What are you guys thinking on Ferris Properties? I think it's a huge improvement.
Yeah, I think everything he's planning on, uh, looks like he's doing a good job in there. They run a pretty tight ship. We're only, we're only talking about the, the building at this point anyways.
Right, and as long as we're talking about, as long as there, we're talking about just the building, it, for me, it's the use. It's, that's the, um, it's, you know, adding in, does, does what it, what is it, what he's trying to do in terms of expansion, does that fall under the current, um, allowable usage that stated, you know, and, and so I don't want to say yes to letting him put a forty-five hundred square foot um, office space in there that's then, um, you know, gonna expand where it's, you know, because still at the end of the day, he's still in a, he's still in a residential area. I know it's a huge piece of property and, and all of, and all of that. So if we're talking strictly building, I'm okay with that, but I, I do have some concerns about, um, the milling and the noise and all of that that goes on within a.
But the application is just for the building.
Right, and that's so that.
The milling gonna be addressed by the town council or whoever.
Right, and I mean, that was, he ta, he talked about the milling. And that's kind of where that, that kind of rose for me, was like, wait, wait, hold a minute, hold on, that we were only talking about the building.
Yeah, I'm not too concerned about the milling. What takes place there, because, I mean, he's got huge equipment in there and the train, Metro North runs right there. I mean, it almost looks like the, the train, you could reach your hand out his building window and touch the train. It's that, it's that close. So the, the, the special permit that was issued there takes into, there's a lot of wood work going on in that property, and it's a, it's a big piece of property with lots of equipment. He's, he's grinding down mulch and, you know, if he wants to, if he wants to make fireplace mantles and, and some wood siding to make some money, I'm, I don't want to, you know, stand in his way, but I realize we're just voting tonight on, on these, these two buildings, the, the main building and the little, the little guardhouse. So, and we'll let Beth and the staff and the attorneys look at this document that was drafted in two thousand seventeen and, uh, make sure everything stays in line with that agreement. So I think, I think for the most part, we're all in agreement. Eileen, you have anything?
No, I, I, I'm willing to vote on the building.
And Melanie, anything? Oh, you're not, you're abst, you abstained, I forgot. Steven?
Yeah, I mean, what he's done with the property, he's made it look a lot nicer than it was, and then on the, the site visit, just seeing the driveway towards the bottom and the safety issue, that, uh, potentially could be having the way he's, he's has it now, uh, in the design is a lot safer for the trucks coming in, so that, that to me is a big factor as well. I, I have no problem with it.
Yeah, and then, um, and then the one neighbor that, that showed up was very, uh, friendly and amicable, so I would entertain a, a motion.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
In regards, before you make a motion, um, my suggestion would be that you come to a consensus and then review the resolution at the next meeting. Reason being that even though you are approving a location, there are other, um, stipulations and references that you should make in the motion that are not written at this time. One being, uh, for example, you would want the site plan to be reviewed by the health department, fire marshal, engineering department, um, all those different departments prior to construction. Uh, you also want, I think you would also want part of the resolution to read identification of the rooms and uses within the structure. Um, and that would be helpful to the building department for their review process. So even though you are, uh, I'm just using those as samples. Um, lighting, you know, you want to make sure that the lighting that is proposed um, is security lighting only and only used in case of emergencies and not left on all, all night thing. I'm just using those as, um, examples, so you have a good solid resolution in front of you when you make your final decision.
Beth, I have a question on a resolution, just going back to the front top lot, that, um, is that something that can be restated in this resolution, that by allowing him to build this forty-five hundred square foot building, that that top lot is no longer used?
What it, what I would do is, in the resolution, I would phrase it as part of, um, your reasoning for approving this building to be there um, is that he will be meeting item fourteen of the planning zoning resolution, which states this upper part is not going to be used anymore. That's, that would be part of the reason for you granting him the, um, besides the safety and traffic, that's another reason to be granting the variance if you so desire. And I would incorporate that in a resolution somehow. And make reference to it.
So Beth, what are you saying? We, we, we vote, but we vote it based upon a resolution that we vote on later?
Um, no, what Planning and Zoning Commission does, they reach a consensus as a commission, and then I come back at the next meeting with a written resolution.
Okay, now, since we, we brought up that, uh, question of the, the old resolution, and does it include milling? Is that something that we would, uh, would be in your resolution, your new resolution?
No, it would not. It would be addressed in a separate manner.
Because he'd have to apply for a new variance for milling.
That would have to be discussed with council. The reason I'm trying to focus on the structure because, for example, if the structure comes in and, um, the bottom portion is for storage, then it's storage. It's not for milling or, or doing something of, of that nature. You know, if it clearly states storage, then it's storage. It's just identifying the uses associated with the building to make sure that there's no increase in the nonconformity of the business itself, not the structure. Uh, again, it's a little complicated, but the milling, the milling question would be answered separately as it's a separate issue involving, um, the department and our land use council.
Okay, so I think we will take a vote on a consensus and, uh, based upon a review and a, a new stipulation for all of the, uh, operations of this new building. The fire marshal review is a very good idea. The lighting is a good idea. Uh, looking at parking and all the, all the, um, identified important systems that go into a, a building. So why don't we do a motion, a second and a vote on our consensus? And we will do a final approval vote after we see, um, a new, a new, uh, stipulation from.
Can I say something?
Please.
Okay, generally, when P and D, P and Z does something like this, what I put in the minutes is that the commission, or in your case, the board, has reached a consensus for staff to draft a, a resolution of approval of whatever it is. And there's no need to do a motion for that because you, you're just reaching a consensus. Am I right, Beth?
Yes.
Okay, so all you have to do is raise your hand and reach a consensus, and I say the board has reached a consensus. That means you all agree that next month Beth will come with something in hand, with a, you know, an approval in hand that you can read into the record that will have all the things you need.
I love it, because Nancy, you're simplifying government. That's always a good thing.
Yeah, because I have to write it up.
So are we, let's raise our hands if we're in consensus with Ferris Properties plans. Okay, we are in consensus.
Okay, you're good.
We're gonna wait till next month to do our official vote.
On the resolution.
Beth and Nancy, you'll do your thing.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Sherwood, did you copy all that?
Thank you all for your time, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
You bet. Take care. All right, so, um.
And I have to speak again, before we get to our minutes, I think we do need to have a motion to put some new business on, Beth?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, wherever you, wherever you put new business.
Yeah, well, we can do it now because I'm ready for it.
So what do you got for new business?
I have a request for variance at three Farnham Hill Road. And it's to construct a three season screened in porch.
For setbacks, I believe.
Yeah. Okay, well, the setbacks don't show here.
Okay, so we want to make a motion to accept that new business?
Mm-hmm.
Make, is that the only new business?
That's it.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept the new business at three Farnham Hill Road.
Second.
And seconded by Jay, by a show of hands, all in favor. It's unanimous. Okay, very good. So our minutes from our previous meeting, which were February sixteenth. Let me, I, um, I didn't, I didn't read these yet.
Hold on, hold on. I'm sorry, you didn't set a date for a public hearing for three Farnham Hill.
Well, it's our, it's at our next.
At your next meeting? Okay, because you.
Is it Farnham Hill or Farnham?
Farnham Hill.
Farnham Hill, good.
Beth, it's kind of a big load for them. Is that, you think that's gonna be okay?
Yeah, that's gonna be fine.
Okay, so the next meeting.
It'll be our meeting in, uh, April, a regular meeting. We'll have, we'll have, uh, Pacific and Farnham Hill.
And then.
And, and. Turkey Plain, but that's.
Yeah, right, okay.
That'll be quick. Okay.
Well, we gotta look at the.
I'm sorry, Rick, go ahead.
Look at the, um, the conditions. All right. So for the minutes, let me just look at these quick. Did anyone else, did anyone read them, find any problems?
I didn't see anything.
Do I get nay?
Yep, that's right. It was a very short meeting. We set our, our calendar and we had election of officers and we, and we, okay, so the minutes look good to me.
Motion to approve minutes from two sixteen twenty-one.
I second.
Okay, motion was made by Steven and seconded by Bobby Joe and Eileen. All those in favor to accept by a show of hands. And Jay, you're gonna abstain or you're gonna raise your hand?
Yeah, I wasn't at the last meeting.
Okay, very good. So it's, it's unanimous. Jay abstains because he wasn't at, at the last meeting. All right. No bills to pay. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Are you joining?
Eileen seconded.
I had a big bottle of tequila in my car waiting, come on.
All those in favor by a show of hands. Okay, unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for listening, letting me.